Welcome into the August 27th Rochester Common Council Meeting. We have minutes in front of you, should have had it, can't look over the minutes. Last council meeting in July as well as June and then the public works, more work meetings. Anybody have any, if any, that's, I think Andrew.
Hi, I'm Richard. About 15, 20 July minutes.
I just have one thing, and I'm willing to pass them, but we're July 23rd, it just says one for food trucks and one for DORA, the DORA update. It just needs to say one for special events.
Now what? I think you said it was three, and I was just looking at the board, and I wanted to see.
Yeah, the DORA is just the one for special events and then the one for the downtown.
Yeah.
And then it's gone.
That is in the July ones?
Uh, yes.
What page is that?
Uh, the very front page, or table, this is very top. Everything else looks perfect, it's just that.
Okay, so like, where do you want me to add that after DORA?
Um, it, where it says separate ordinances and it has like the, whatever that is, the one for food trucks and one for, one for special events and then one for downtown. I thought it was good.
With those changes, can we be seconded? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we've got, it's gonna be a tedious meeting possibly, we're hoping to expedite it, because we can't allow this stuff to formality, but I'm gonna have Beth share some communication with the public as well as the council members.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Andy Perkins, our city attorney, sent us this very nice memorandum that you all have a copy of, that kind of goes down through requirements regarding ordinances and the public hearings. So we have so many, we've got five public hearings tonight, so it'll be five separate public hearings, and then we have nine ordinances and resolutions. So by following these instructions on how to do them, it should go faster than it has in the past, so just wanted to let you all know that it's right there.
Okay, um, we're a little bit unclear on whether we actually have to have a vote to open a public hearing, but we're, so we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and vote just to be on the safe side, so I need a motion to open the public hearing for a certification of amendment to zoning, Matt?
Second.
And second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Beth, this is, this one correct?
Yes.
You guys have a copy of all this?
This report has all the details.
That's the area commission approved the rezoning, and so we have to also approve it.
So this has been, this has been passed by this line commission, correct?
Yes.
We're just affirming that.
They've made a favorable recommendation, we need to create the ordinance number and approve it so it could be reported.
Yeah, and I did, and we'll get there.
So that's what you're voting on tonight.
I thought we didn't even have a public hearing for this, but
Yes, we didn't.
They already had one.
No.
Okay, so is there any comment, public comment on this matter, particular matter? Okay, so, we need a motion to close that public hearing. Martin, Brian Goodman, seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, need a motion to open the second public hearing on the adoption of a resolution established in the URA, Selma Keller. So moved.
Second.
We're moving, seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any public, any public comment pertaining to this public hearing? Very good, and I need a motion to close that public hearing.
Need a motion.
Second. Amy made the motion, Brian Goodman, seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Third, public hearing, we need a motion to open the petition to vacate Public Road, Brian Lewis, North and South, so moved. Brian moved, Amy seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any public comment concerning this? Yes, sir. I would advise, try and keep public comment around three minutes if we can.
Okay, I have to send the letter to the boardroom.
Can I, you have your name, sir?
Martin Tullahan.
Okay.
We are, we own property, where these streets are being vacated, and the vacating of the streets will severely limit our access to the future use of the lots. We own eight lots, and we figure you have sufficient, and there's, there's just not too many ways to get in there of the public streets. And I don't know if any changes have been made, but when they, when they pass out the copies of what was proposed, there's a lot, a lot of the errors in it, a wrong street, wrong dimensions, wrong lot numbers, there's many issues with the way the petitions are written, so I don't think you can really judge them the way they're written, so you check out some of the errors that are in it. And that's in both, unless they've been changed, if somebody's changed them since they initially passed them out, or made corrections, but I haven't seen.
They are different from the original flat, which is probably what he is referring to, because we had pulled the original flat, but then things were changed, like the roads aren't even the same, and the lots are different, so that's probably the difference that he looked at.
Can you show us on this where the lots are that you, um...
I'm sorry, I didn't. Can I show you?
Yeah.
One, two, three, five, six, seven. All there in kind of little clusters.
Is, is that say road back to the?
No, that's the road to the golf, that's the golf course, right there.
Is it all grown up in trees right now?
I'm sorry?
Is it all grown up in trees right now?
It's, it's a lot of trees, and we, in natural, natural habitat. We have considered in the past the possibility of building a house there on those lot ad lots, that were faced to the south, faced to golf course. But we don't have any plans, and we probably hadn't thought about it too much until this came up, about the movement of access, we always assumed it was going to be access. This is a little, a piece together from the records that works on this. This is a piece three, piece three, this one, this one, all in that area. If they closed this and this, closed the streets, it may really difficult. And as you, you see, this, this street does not go out to Country Club Drive, so there's no access here. This thing you see on there is just a trail on, on the golf course.
So, okay, I think we understand what your concern is.
The thing, the thing is, is that the way they're written is really incorrect, there's a lot of errors in this, so you can't really, in my opinion, you couldn't really vote on those, because they're, they're totally erroneous.
Okay.
And I, I have some other questions, too, but I'm not sure if this is the right line to ask.
How, how this is pertaining particularly to this, it has to be just on this matter?
Well, um, the way the, the way, uh, the way the petitions were written is they were to come all the way down to the golf course, and this street is in here, that would mean they would cross across that street, which is, I forget the name of, Parkview or something like that.
Yeah.
And, and the same on this street, they go too far, and they, they cross over into this other street, and I don't know how the law would work, when you vacate this street, can you vacate part of another street at an intersection, I don't know how it works at an intersection, maybe our legal terms might tell us.
Okay, all right, um, yes, sir.
I have five adjacent lots, if you want my opinion on this, I might be able to clarify some things.
Roger Farley.
I can barely hear you from back there.
Sir, I said I, I have, I am five adjacent lots, so I might be able to clarify some things.
Okay.
So, I don't know what map you're looking at here. So, you know, the areas that we're actually most concerned about are pretty independent of Marty's, and we're all for having happy neighbors, so I think there could be accommodations that would be just fine. I do wonder, though, this street across here gives him access to all those properties, even if those roads were vacated, that is, the road that comes up here, that right of way comes all the way across, and neither of the roads we talked about vacated, so...
The question I have is if we vacate him, half the property goes to the road, problem the other, half of it goes to the other property, is that gonna give, on your half, is that gonna give you real access?
So he'll go from 120 across to 150 across.
Is it that, is it that way?
That doesn't really help the access.
Well, so right here, this is all impenetrable for us from here down, and from here down, this is impenetrable for us. This road here that goes along the ninth street, I don't think anyone's talking about vacating this, so you can come all the way across here.
Well, the way these, the way the proposal is written, it includes down to that street.
Yeah, I don't think it really wants that.
You can't do that.
What's that?
You can't do it down to that street.
Right, you just don't do it to that street, yeah, because you, you don't want to vacate, you still want access to it when it comes up to here, so I think that's completely enough. We go to here, okay, this is a lot, it's owned by this property, yes, it's owned by this property, so, you know, it doesn't really make any sense to us as neighbors to the Lewis's, that this is all right of way, you know, we don't even use the right of way, we come across this part of the right of way, you know, we're fine neighbors, doing each other our whole lives, so we're fine with making this trade, but if what Marty is trying to do is preserve these lots yields all with this one, right, how does that help?
That's a new residential.
Yeah, so, right, if he's trying to preserve, you know, access to that, I don't know if you're allowed to just vacate roadway down to those points, I don't know if that's something Brian would want, because...
Is that, is that a possibility or not?
Yeah, if you, if you just wanna, if you just wanna vacate up to the back of Mr. Tullahan's property, I mean, I don't care if that, it's just, you know, like everybody's saying, it's all overgrown, no access anywhere, you know, except for where we have right here a little bit, but everything's all overgrown, he's got easier access than I here, up here.
Right.
But if you just wanna vacate to the north side of his property...
And then his is intact?
Yeah, I mean, then he can access...
In any case, nobody wanted to vacate this, but like you say, how these things are communicated.
But, well, yeah, that's fine, but this is, this is questionable, I take access to, the gunk, golf cart building is built on part of that road interference.
Well, this aerial shot is right up against the end of it.
Right. So, but that is applied to roadway.
Yeah, across Parkview.
Anyway, I just wanted to get that clarification, if that helps at all, I don't want to take any more time.
Yeah, there were you, Alan, that come through your line commission.
Yeah, well, courtesy, Brian, you might have stopped that courtesy.
And I actually approached Heather like two, three years ago, I said, what would it take to vacate that roadway, so everyone's seeing, sure I go, every Brian would want to.
This is why you have two separate petitions, one for each road, because I wasn't sure if we had issues on the one side or the other, so that's why there's two ordinances. So I talked to Brian, and the gentleman I know who's probably questioning this measurement on this side, and we went down to this side, because if this whole road is vacated, it would only be this portion here, because it's 30 feet, so then, once this is vacated, this end house that is part of that road will give the 15 feet, but this road is not in question. But if anything touching this plat, the roadway, it's basically the half.
The way the dimensions, I take the way the dimensions working, takes it all the way down to the south side.
It does, of this, just to this side.
Well, this one too.
Okay, well, it shouldn't on this one, because we did the measurements off the plat, so I don't know if it's different in the roadway or difference in the lots.
I was just using, I was just using the distances on the plat.
Okay, um, so that's what this side is, this, this road, this southern part is not in question of being vacated at all, and it just went down to this side, so this particular property would get the 15 feet if it was vacated.
Okay, that's not the way it's written.
Well, it's gonna have the whole distance, because it's gonna go the whole distance on this side.
Well, it's, I would say a reason too.
Because they need...
Why should they vacate, why should we vacate 30 feet of this street?
It wouldn't, it would be 15 feet, it'd only be 15 feet, because then the other 15 foot would stay with this street, but it would stop.
You don't understand my question. If, if you extend the vacation of this street all the way down to the Elk's property, you're closing a section of this, you're vacating 30 feet on this street and this one, which makes no sense. And also, the one petition that shows vacating this street over here would be the wrong street names on the petition. Unless somebody has corrected them, so it's on here. what we've got, go on from there.
Well, I'm in agreement with you.
There's no way to approve it, it's written, because that's in the areas.
There is.
Thank you.
Some of this, like, the southern portion of Brian's property is, shows, I think, and then we've got, they have the heights, which they go together, so we've got the little distance here, which then connects down, so that's why I said two of that. Names for that particular one. This part here is a, is different thing, so this is, that's why that's labeled different than this one here, so this one is connected down, and that's why it's got different, different names. This is, I think, a little drive, and changes down here on the plat, if you look at it, but, I mean, find the corrections and...
Okay, what's the difference, I don't, I won't get into other public hearing yet, but I like the difference between east and west and north and south.
That we've got a number 20.
This is considered east-west road? Well, that's considered north and south.
There's a vacation request for both east-west and north and south.
Because this right here, just this section, because this is part of the road behind this Brian's property, so it's this here, which extends here, and then this here, so that's why there's three different names, because this is a different subdivision, and then this one is, this is separate.
So, would you suggest we try and figure this out a little bit before we proceed?
What we need to do is figure that out, so I guess...
Okay, well, I don't know, I mean, you mentioned vacate down to a certain point.
Yeah, I mean, if they don't wanna, if you guys don't wanna do the vacating, then I will have to change the description on it, and again, that's why I made two separate ordinances, because, you know, there's issues on this side, and you could not pass it, or issues on this side, so that's why there's two separate ordinances.
Sure.
So Marty, were you looking to just not vacate from your properties down?
Would you be okay just to stop, stop into your property?
I, I wouldn't be in favor of that, but I don't know how, how much I could testify strongly opposed to that.
Yeah, if you're not a property, if it's not an adjacent property, you have no, you can't oppose it. If you're adjacent to it, you know, we could, we could grant the vacation down to a certain point, you should have to rewrite it, but once, you know, if it doesn't touch your property, you have no, you have no right to object.
Well, if you stopped at one lot north of my property, if you take it all the way down to my property, then it does touch my property.
I can object, but we may not listen to you.
Well, it would, it would touch your property line, but legally you wouldn't get any of the vacating, so this would still be, it would all still be over wherever they stop, so unless this lies directly adjacent and adjoining your lot, you're not gonna be...
Yeah, it would, it would mess up the corner.
Would you be satisfied with that, as much as you could be?
I guess.
Okay, Brian, would you be okay with that, if she redrafts this and brings it back to us?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. How about this one, are we talking about this street?
Well, you heard you got a property along there, so I would, I would stop it, my suggestion is stopping it up here where his property starts.
I didn't know we could vacate half the street, I didn't know that was even possible.
Yeah.
Yeah, why not, right?
Yeah, you can, so...
Not much of a street.
The one thing, is to vacate the whole place, and then vacate the rest of the games, it's gonna keep more feet on each side of all this lot, makes his lots bigger.
Right.
Because it gives him more room to build his house.
Okay, I mean, you may come back to us, you build a house, you may want that 15 feet, and you may come back to us and want us to vacate.
You've got that option.
So that's...
Question.
Okay.
When the sewer was, everything was put in, was anything on those, been on those streets?
No, they're all undeveloped, I mean, they're all...
It's all just overgrown.
If somebody, he wants to put a house in on his property, how would he connect?
Well, he'll still have that southern portion, and then come up through, and then...
Okay, was it called through where?
Well, they'll have the southern portion, so I don't know if coming down, I mean, this road's developed, it'd be here.
Severely, severely limits the option, so how any utility is gonna make it, actually.
Well, I mean, either way, if you're looking at it this way, because none of this is developed, this is all overgrown, so...
Where, I understand the streets there.
Well, they would have to come down, I don't know, this house, years on this, remind you, this side, or this side, so they first come down, however, this is, run us through, this road is still open, and then this is still open, and all of this is still going on, so...
This is a part of the road.
It's not, it's not developed, but...
This road is, it's actually a road.
So can you, can you...
It is.
It has been.
Here, from here, is two separate properties. Because they took a two street.
It's 30 days.
It's very much even, even ground.
Like that, the southern one.
When you have the fellow, clear.
Yeah.
Right, it's a golf course here.
It's all pretty.
They tried to be enveloped, however, their, however, they would, determined to do that, that is, you know, if anybody, if you're really ready to, this would actually...
Absolutely.
Right.
Are we good?
And these roads...
Okay, so, I want to, I want to bring the, the, the council, you know, we don't make claims, we want to get rid of them.
Well, that's a case we want to figure out.
We'll, we'll bring this up later in the meeting, very important, right, for vacation, correct?
If you can, just remember to close your existing unit.
Right, but I'm just saying, we're gonna open this second, or we're gonna close this memorandum, go in the second room on the same matter, similar matter, then down, down the ways a little bit, we'll decide whether we want to have you go back and redraft this with the vacation stopping in the northern edge properties, or, and it'll be a council decision on whether we vacate the whole thing that's written, is that clear? Okay, so, need a motion, is there any other public comment on this? Okay, Brian moves, Amy second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, need a motion to open the public hearing on the, to vacate Public Road East and West, Brian moves.
So moved.
Second.
Moving, seconded, Brian and Amy. Public comment, any further than what we already had? Okay, need a motion to close public hearing on that?
So moved.
Amy, I guess, that will, Brian and Amy again.
Second.
Now need a, yeah, motion to vacate public street for Dwayne Border and District. Oh, did I, did I not vote? I didn't vote. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I probably missed a couple votes there before, okay. All right, need a motion to open the public hearing on the vacation of public street, District Dwayne Border on J Street.
Need a motion.
Second.
Amy and Brian, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Get that one. Okay, District Dwayne, do you have anything you want to say concerning this? We have the map in front of us.
It's just, what we talked about before, it's the unimproved part of J Street behind 180 Holden, which is our warehouse for the street department, so that we can put a security fence around the area.
Okay, any other public comment concerning that? Any motion to close?
So moved.
Second.
Brian and Amy, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, old business, is Nate here, anybody from that development present? Okay, we're not gonna go any further with that. Old business, DORA update, Amy and Andy.
Yes, so we've done quite a bit of work to get things together, so I promised we have two separate DORA ordinances, we will not be voting on these, but this is so you can see what we are proposing, so I'm gonna take these two, and if you want to have these two, we also have Councilman Jack Tullahan from Warsaw here to answer any questions related to, if any of the council members have questions related to a city that is currently using the DORA, he is here to answer that and show different things that they've had. So, after much conversation with council folks and community members, different individuals, Andy Shox and the whole world, basically, we've spoken and interviewed different people, talked to other communities, it was decided that it would make more sense to do two separate ordinance, ordinances, one we're calling the Downtown DORA, so that is the traditional DORA in which we have been discussing, related to providing the opportunity for restaurants to not have fences, and so that would be, the map is, I believe, I don't know what page Andy put us together, one, two, I think it's four pages in, so you can see the map of what that is, so that's the traditional designated permittee with the restaurants, and so this, we worked diligently to put the ordinance, as well as the maps, the, what it will look like to have the signs, and also, I believe the applications are in here, right, Andy, or did we not add those?
I'll imagine, this is one of them.
We did not have those. So the application, we have received all nine applications for all of the designated permittees, so every designated permittee, every restaurant that's in the Downtown DORA has submitted an application in favor of moving toward the DORA. So that is the, what we're calling the Downtown DORA, which is what I like to call the Restaurant DORA. The second is a special event, DORA, we have a little work to do on this, related to speaking to Accelerate Indian Municipalities Attorney, Becca McRae, she indicated that to be able to do this specifically to support the chamber or the main street organization related to activities and events, that we would have to choose specific events to institute this DORA. And so I've emailed to Julian with the Chamber, and also to Julie Luton, to talk about what those different events would be, and those would be the events in which this DORA would be activated, that they could activate it if they would like to. With that, you'll see the map as well, so that has the whole downtown in the area, and that would just be... With that, you'll see the map as well, so that has the whole downtown in the area, and that would just be in use when someone put a special event application in, they would indicate through that special event application that they would like to use that Dora. And then, um, it includes the original area, um, as well as, um, the other businesses, so that it would be access for wherever those events would be. So we're taking into the future of events, um, wherever those would be located, so, um, and as well, all those applications have come in for, um, support of that, so.
So this is our's own work for the next month to?
To look at that, um, to come up with any questions, to check into the yellow pieces, um, what I have to do, uh, so I have, um, John here had asked me to request of the businesses that they would pay for all the marketing, and they have agreed that they would share the cost of all of the marketing for the Dora. To the signs that are gonna be, for the street signs for us to put up, as well as the signs that they would put on their doors, um, every piece, the original set of cups, um, we've talked about viability, um, Andy and I had an extensive conversation about that, to make sure that we're covered in that direction, um, Frontosur Downtown Partnership has agreed to host the maps there for the QR codes, as well as to be the, uh, organization that would supply the cups into the future, so they can use a sense fundraiser. I think that that's everything. Alyssa is here in favor, so if you want a business perspective, Monica, I think Julie's here as well, um, they are here to answer questions related to anything that you guys have as well as Jack, so.
I don't know about other council members, I have been contacted by a couple of people who are against this for the reasons of, of drinking on public streets and maybe the message it sends to children. Has there been any kind of an economic impact study? What it means to the businesses that want to participate in the downtown Dora especially, more so than the special event?
Can I invite those two to speak on this?
Yeah, 'cause I know that they actually, the council requested that the, um, police department do a survey of crime related to the Dora, as well as that they, um, worked with the Chamber, so Jack can probably answer some of those questions, I'm putting him on the spot, but he's a very smart man, so he can answer a lot of those, 'cause they've been doing this, I'm not sure for how long, but, um, they've been navigating that, so if you don't mind, Jack should be answering some of those questions, he's the expert in the matter, I'm just trying to take it all in, so.
Do you mind if I slide this over and use it just? Well, I want to thank you for having me here tonight, uh, it's an honor to be here with you. I am, as Amy said, a council member of Warsaw City, uh, and I was asked to come here to share some information about our Dora. I've got some, some information to pass out to you, uh, and I can also tell you a little bit about ours. We started investigating the Dora, um, in the fall of 2023, the urging of our, our Chamber. Member of our, members of our council, like yours, uh, struggled with, with a number of questions, uh, Councilman Smith, you, you expressed the, um, the questions, if you had some constituents, about what kind of message that sends, we struggled with that as well. As a matter of fact, we had one no vote, uh, on that because of that, um, you know, how will the community react? Will it open our downtown to, uh, more alcohol-related incidents? You know, we were really concerned about that. We debated, debated many options, uh, for establishing a Dora. Being pretty conservative, I initially favored establishing a Dora that would be for special events only. Uh, after discussions with our police department, it became apparent that for continuity and to help, uh, stifle confusion, establishing a time period of three hundred and sixty-five days a year was, was our best, best plan. And the reason for that was, uh, we, we had two reasons for that, uh, one, establish three hundred and sixty-five days a year, a police officer did have to consistently keep looking at his calendar and say, is it good today or, or not? Are, are they legal or are they not? Uh, that was one thing that, that helped out our PD. And, two, a Dora actually tightens up, and this one, uh, Councilman Smith, I, I think you could, uh, speak to, it will actually, uh, tighten up alcohol consumption, public alcohol consumption. When Dora is, uh, Dora is established, consumers can only legally consume alcohol within the Dora. Uh, cup, sorry, got a couple of them here that I brought to pass around, these are our Dora cups that we have currently, I've got a couple of these today. They cannot walk around with an open beer publicly. However, what most of us did not realize was, uh, that prior to this Dora, people can consume alcohol legally, walking around town with an open container. Not in the car, obviously, there's law against that, but they could actually consume alcohol, walking around. I could go to a car show, you guys got to go to a car show, that's a really nice car show. I could legally put a twelve pack in a cooler in the back of my trunk, pull up to the car show and have twelve beers during the day. You know, until I become intoxicated or some other thing where the police would come along and say, hey buddy, come on, let's go. But that's, you know, that is something that was a misconception of ours, that we, we were under the assumption that, um, you couldn't do that normally, just every day. But, uh, unless you have an ordinance against that, and I don't know if there's even a way to establish that, uh, locally, uh, it's legal. So, under the Dora, the amount of drinks, uh, now let's say we've, we've established a Dora, and you got, you, you have your map, and I, I brought a map of ours as well, um, but within this Dora that we have established, there it is. Within this Dora that we have established, now all of a sudden, people cannot publicly drink unless they've got it in a Dora cup. And those drinks are, uh, are, I don't know what I want to say, they, they're.
Limited.
Limited? That's, that's, that's a good one, yeah, that wasn't the word I was looking for, but that is right. Uh, it, it's, it's limited, much like it is i- if you go into a bar. You know, it's under the responsibility of the bar owner to make sure that that patron does not, uh, consume too much alcohol. So in a way, the Dora, this was something that was really kind of a revelation to us, was that it actually kind of tightened up the amount of alcohol consumption that could be done in the Dora publicly. So, having gone through, uh, these things that we had, these issues that we debated, we worked through these and many more questions, after working through, I was convinced that the option was a bit more. It promoted our downtown area and supported local business. March 4th, on second reading, Warsaw Council passed the ordinance establishing a Dora. On May 17th was the night we kicked off our Dora during the Warsaw's Fat and Skinny Tire Fest. Since then, it has been pretty quiet. As a matter of fact, I, I was talking to the mayor this morning, and I asked him, I said, have you heard anything about the Dora, how's it going? You know, he says, you know, he says, I have not heard any complaints about it whatsoever, it has, it has been still quite. And he was, he was very surprised about that, which I was too. From our PD, I, I talked to one of our captains in our police department, one of the things that we, we were very concerned about was an uptick in alcohol-related incidents. So, as we went through this whole process, I asked the PD for, um, specific, you know, what kind of incidents have we had over the past two or three years? Which was very low, and we established that as a baseline, so that should any, anything kind of tick up, then we would know, okay, it couldn't possibly be related to this Dora. Uh, we haven't had any incidents, as a matter of fact, our, um, our, our, uh, city, our captain was, um, is very supportive of the Dora, basically because of the way they control it and that sort of thing. So, uh, it's, it's, it's been a really good thing, um, we, uh, let's see, we, we've worked really hard, as I'm sure you, you folks have, in Warsaw to maintain a family-friendly atmosphere, especially downtown. And we wanted to have some of these things in place, we wanted to be able to pull the plug on it just as quickly as we could if, if we started having an uptick in, in, uh, in incidents, and there have been none so far, so. You know, if, we've only been doing it for, maybe about, it's been established for about four months, so it's still relatively new. Uh, still relatively young, um, I've also talked to some of the establishments downtown and asked them, um, what their thoughts are for, and I was talking to Crystal from Rex's Rondin today, uh, she supplied these cups for you to take a look at. Uh, she said, we're seeing new customers during special events, customers that never came into their door before. As a matter of fact, I think she said the last one that they had, uh, they sold, I think, a hundred and twenty-five of these. Uh, they just tack on a twenty-five cent fee for a Dora cup, and that's how they pay for the Dora cup, they call it a convenience fee, which I think is, is perfectly fine, it seems to work. It seems to be bringing people downtown more, and it seems to be bringing, uh, getting people to last, uh, by mistake. It, it regulates the alcohol consumption, she said, and it helps retain, uh, special events downtown. When things like this go on, it helps promote the special event, which helps promote downtown, uh, it's, it seems to be a win-win for everybody. Now, what works for Warsaw may not work for Rochester, and I, I don't, I don't pretend to, to know your community as well as I know my own. I know it has worked well for us, uh, I have some, uh, information here, but from, uh, our perspective, the Dora has been a positive one for Warsaw. If, but it, it continues, if it continues on the way it has, uh, I see no reason to, to repeal it. If you're interested, I have with me, uh, copies of the ordinance, press clippings, um, the Warsaw City Dora literature, that on the map, I'm happy to leave that with you. And, uh, you can also go, if you really, really want to get to these, uh, you can go onto our Warsaw website, and we have all of our meetings, our, uh, videotaped and live-screened, and, uh, it would be the, uh, February 20th and March 4th council meetings. Uh, you can, you can listen to the debate, if, if you're not bored enough with your own meetings, you can get bored by my meeting, so. And I, I guess I'll just stop right here and ask you if you've got any questions.
You, you only have the one Dora, and it's downtown?
We only have one Dora, and anything comes as a make-up.
Uh, how do you handle a special event request if they wanna have?
Well, typically they have their special events in downtown, and it all fits them in the one area. How many locations participate? I believe we got, um, seven to eleven, something like that, we've got seven to eleven different restaurants and pubs and, uh, so forth that have participated in this.
You mentioned before about the old, current, prior to this, people were able to bring a twelve-pack beer and go sit downtown, is that, was that a city ordinance, county or state?
That, I believe that's state, 'cause we didn't have anything preventing it. And so therefore, uh, as far as state, and I'm sure your, your city council, uh, can help look into that, make sure that's.
But you said you, your ordinance makes it more restrictive than this thing of all that?
Having, well, having a Dora establishes the fact that, um, you have to have your beverage in a Dora cup if you're walking around town. And by doing it three hundred and sixty-five days a year, we've established that the only public drinking you can do, you can do in the Dora is with this cup.
In that boundary.
In that boundary.
Oh, is that a good? I'm getting quite too far beyond where we need to go here.
So Jack, when you say special events, the end of three sixty-five, so it technically, it is kind of a full Dora?
Yeah.
And you don't highlight, like, where we had this one that was just special events that we had to identify, so you were actually doing a downtown Dora, but you are adding the full area into it.
Right, right.
'Cause they can do events and everything.
Yeah.
They have a spot where they can do events, it's not what they wanted to do.
And, and, and that way, uh, it relieves, the council relieves, PD relieves everybody of happening to, okay, what, which door are we doing now instead? You know, it, it just made it simpler.
Well, in the special events Dora, you have to put in that you're having a special event, and everybody has to tell the city, the state, correct? That's the way I understand it, they have to tell the state liquor board that, hey, we're gonna be part of the special events Dora.
So the ordinance would, this second one, the special event, what Becca had said, and they're gonna re, they will review if that's the way we're going to perform, maybe we submit it, but, um, they, the special events would be identified, so the Alcohol Tobacco Commission come, they would know whatever is on here would be when they could show up.
Right, 'cause we have, somebody has to be responsible.
Somebody may not have the event, but they would, that would be what they would use as their, uh, their map, so they would say they could show up if we could not have an event on that day, even though it's in the ordinance. Or somebody would, I don't know, Rochester Downtown Partnership or someone would put in applicant, a special event application asked to do that.
Right, so that's.
But that's how the Alcohol Tobacco Commission, Becca said, would know. It is a lot more work, you know, to manage that part, but there was some discomfort having kind of the full capacity three sixty-five, so that was how we how we tried to reconcile, like, some discomfort with that piece, but it sounds like you guys did it differently.
Yeah, we, and we did kind of look at, you know, establishing different doors, and we, we are, we're still open to having other doors. They'll probably be patterned after this, but only maybe in a different section of town. We don't allow alcohol indoor our public parks, um, there's been some discussion about, about that, because, um, our park pavilion, um, which was renovated by, uh, one of the local companies, really nice, and whenever you get something that nice, you know, people want alcohol, if they're having weddings there or so forth, so we're, we're, we'll be looking at some of those in the future, but for now, we've, we've stuck with this one, we kind of, you know, wanted to put our toes in the water first and not just go in full hog, but, uh, it's, it's worked out really well for us so far.
Okay, I appreciate it so much.
Sure. Here's, uh, that's a copy of our, our ordinance that we passed, um, some press clippings and so forth.
So I assume the next council meeting, we'll move in full force forward on this, uh, with a, um, any based-in ordinance or two ordinances to possibly, uh, read?
Yeah.
Probably won't be doing all three at that night, but maybe one and two and then three the following month, if everything goes.
Sure.
As long as the two ordinances are what the council, I mean, that's kind of from my perspective, this is the way that we are moving forward, because that was the requested, since the request, um, as long as everyone's saying that's still what they want to do it.
We may vote the downtown and not vote this one.
Yeah, but we would just have to have the full, so I would have to have the events, so I'd have to work with Julie and Julian to figure out what events need to be in here, as well as we have to get the legal descriptions, um, and then Casey Henley is working on, um, the exterior boundaries, so she is doing that from the maps. So we just have a couple of additional pieces that we have to get, that we would, our hope is to be able to submit both of those in totality.
Next meeting.
Next meeting. But I wanted to, you know, and Jack would probably be willing to share his contact information, in case you guys have any additional questions that you want to ask privately, um, as well as I'll have this stuff here, and if you want to.
Jack, are you okay if Amy sends us all your contact info?
Sure. It can't be any worse than the constituents I've got back home.
All right, thank you, Jack, and we'll, uh, move forward on this, be ready for the next meeting, take a chance, read it all. Any other old business?
Can I give one comment on it?
Yeah.
It just, a real.
It's just a real life example of how it works downtown right now. We had a band in a month ago. We worked with Ruth, we had an outdoor market on private property between the theater and Ruthless. By the end of the day, we had to get three different permits, even though we're on private property and at the theater. Two catering on Ruth, Ruthless and Evergreens Park, and a catering inside the theater, where if we hadn't established Dora, they could have had drinks at Ruth's, Uncork, Monica's, you know, and come to the show. We're not, we're just trying to make it a little more easier for visitors to come to our town. Like, it was a lot of paperwork. And during that week, Ruth had, like, somebody at the state gave us a wrong email, or, I mean, it, it takes us a lot of time to pull through this red tape. So, and that's event-based, but that's kind, you know, with fall coming, the theater should have two events a month like that, hopefully. Um, but we'd like to make that easier on everyone. So, that, that would ease that for sure.
Okay, um, so I'd invite you, and I just see you here for the same reason. Can I invite anybody surrounding this Dora, kind of that conversation to come to the next meeting as well? Um, I, I told you old business I have. I want to ask you, because you're not on the agenda, we talked, I don't remember how we left it, did you want to talk about the times tonight?
No, we're, we moved that, then I moved that.
Move that to the next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Okay, new business. First up, uh, the Keller tax abatement and zoning approval. Um, and that correlates, if you look down below, with resolution twenty-four and twenty-five. Andy, I'm assuming we need to vote on each one of those resolutions separately?
Yeah, I think you should vote on them separately, but you don't have to. It's a resolution on ordinance. If you want to put it in one motion, you certainly can.
Okay, this is pretty much a procedural thing. We've had a lot of discussion about this. Do you have anything else you want to add, Gary?
Uh, just that it's essentially the same, uh, presentation that we've, we've brought before you, uh, a couple of different occasions. This is really just a continuance from actions that were taken in June and July, um, to make sure that we were doing everything by the book. The project that we're proposing remains the same, um, what we're requesting remains the same, but I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have this evening.
If you remember, our discussion was about, uh, their bid for the state tax award, or the tax credit award. Um, and the fact that they get awarded, we have to come up with our ten percent match and part of this will be, I mean, just be applicable toward a ten percent, so we had this discussion a couple of different times, and, uh, we need to do it. Otherwise, so little, little might. That's one O. Got resolution twenty-five.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four and twenty-five. See, I'm not seeing...
So, yeah, twenty-four.
Oh, here's twenty-four. Okay, actually, twenty-four. That shows the map, um, I think it has the schedule in there, too, done through.
Uh, yes.
Second.
And just to add a bit more context, the tax abatement that we're requesting would be for improvements only, you know, because the property that we're considering is more or less unimproved with just a vacant garage on it, contributing slightly less than zero dollars to the tax base. We would still continue to pay all the taxes with the land is currently generating, and then once the project is up and running and established, it would significantly jump up, um, and it would have a stabilizing effect on our long-term operations, because we, by state policy, have to be self-sufficient without any external, um, support financially. Uh, it lets us better able to respond to where and where as the property ages with reduction in operating costs, and it'll, it'll allow for a nicer property in the long term.
Okay, so, the first, that, that, uh, resolution twenty-five is basically just affirming what the bank commission already done. Uh, twenty-four is the abatement, basically, um, confirmatory resolution. We did the declaratory in June, I believe, wasn't it?
Correct.
So, I need a motion made of both of these resolutions. We can do all one, one vote.
So, so item six on page two of twenty-four. The reason we're doing that abatement, is that the abatement, and that goes towards a ten percent, is that correct?
Yes.
And we need to do that at that level and help that ten percent.
I just wanted to confirm.
Can I give the two, uh, ordinance in one motion?
Yes.
Right, the precedent ordinance, uh, around the side, resolution twenty-four dash twenty-four and resolution twenty-five dash twenty-four.
Second. Seconded, um, all in favor, rate it right again. Pass six-O. Okay, um, next new business is Ken Hoff's request of the third for a resolution for tax abatement, which should be in front of you. We have also had this discussion, that, that started in May, we had a little bit of discussion about that, Ken, I think we did.
I think so.
Inside here, you're applying the S B, what is it?
S B one.
S B one. We need two different votes on this, right? One for the S B one, or is this all together?
So, we're trying to, we're actually voting on declaring economic divestation here.
Okay, well, that's simple.
And then the S B one is just the supporting documentation for that, that shows the number of employees, how it will benefit the property.
Right.
Go ahead with the project.
Do what? Yeah, we have to approve it, but I didn't know if it, no vote on one. We were, I was confused in that conversation we had before the meeting. So, this is, uh, resolution twenty-six, and we discussed, you know, the impact it could have downtown, jobs it'd be bringing, hopefully will stimulate, um, further action downtown.
Does this, if we approved resolution twenty-six, twenty-four, does it approve the tax abatement?
We'll have a confirmatory resolution after this.
It doesn't do the tax abatement at this point. The S B one's in there for the, um...
For information.
Information, yeah. And then the confirmatory resolution will have, approve the tax abatement, the number of years and the percentage and all that.
And you will have to have a, you'll have to have a public hearing before you pass the second resolution?
It's like the one we just did for Keller.
Yeah.
It'll be just exactly like that. We'll have a public hearing to do the confirmatory, and then it will have the schedule in it, and then it will be voting on the amount of the, um, abatement, it'll have the schedule in there.
Right. So, that's the first step of...
I just had really many ones.
First step of two?
Pardon?
First step of two?
Similar to what we did with Keller, correct?
Right.
Yeah.
I'm noticing on the S B one, the estimated start date's nine thirty, twenty-four, completion date's three thirty, twenty-four. That should be twenty-five.
Yes. That's a typo. It's my typo.
Okay, I got one question for Doc. Um, in May or a few, whatever, well, you said something about twenty jobs, but we're down to ten. Is that pretty certain, have ten?
Okay. So, there will be ten employees that are actually physically permanently located in the building, and then there's going to be around twenty-five traveling employees that will work out of that location.
Okay.
But because it's a business that's already sort of in the community, we only wanted to put the ten to show that it will definitely go up by at least ten, maybe more than that. So, just to make sure we didn't overpromise on that.
So, this is an already established business that's going to be moving into this location?
We're, we're keeping them, yes, because they have outgrown their current space, so we would be keeping them here, that will increase the number of employees they have, and instead of going to, like, Kokomo or somewhere else.
I, it was, I was, I looked through the scope of work, trying to figure out what exactly it was going in there, so very detailed I liked it.
Okay, all right. Make your motion for adoption, resolution twenty-six dash twenty-four.
Seconded.
Second. Bob or Amy, who do you want?
Yes.
Should move the seconded, all in favor, rate it right again. Pass six-O. Then we'll have the confirmatory resolution at our September meeting, with the schedule, correct?
Public hearing.
We'll have the public, yeah, all that stuff. Okay. All right. Uh, any other new business? Okay. Uh, what's sixteen, which is just the formality? I say it's a formality, because it's just giving the Board of Works the authority to name streets. It's here somewhere. And that is an ordinance, so we need to, uh, we're going to read that ordinance, and by rule, we can do the first and third reading by title only, a second reading can be done by title only, unless we have objection, and we can read the whole thing. It is only the sixteen, dash twenty-four.
So, I'm just curious, where, where did this come from?
We've already named two streets, so we need approval to do so.
I thought that's a bit, if you...
Go back.
I understood, that's probably what happened. I was just asking.
You didn't need to bring it up.
Oh, you didn't have to say, you didn't have to say it out loud.
Well, don't ask.
I'm sorry. I mean, everybody was curious.
So, I need you to pass it. Okay, Brian, you want to handle it? Heavy work?
Sure.
And we do not need to vote to read these ordinance.
Introducing ordinance number sixteen dash twenty-four by title only, creating street names. And if, um...
Three.
If there are no objections, um, we'll have to read, have the second reading by title only.
Second.
We don't need, oh.
All we need is objections. If we have an objection, rate your, you know, objection, but otherwise we don't need us.
Ordinance number sixteen dash twenty-four, creating street names. At this time, I'd like to have the third reading, uh, ordinance sixteen twenty-four by title only, uh, ordinance sixteen dash twenty-four, creating street names.
Okay, is there any comment, questions? Need a motion to approve that ordinance?
Sound good.
Second. Art, and then Brian, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, ordinance seventeen. I read through this, and I was actually dumber after I read it than I was before I read it.
It's just basically a formality. When we codify all the ordinances and resolutions, the American Legal Publishing requires a, an ordinance, and the last one that we had done was, like, twenty sixteen, so we're updating to get approved, actually, to be codified. So, that's what the purpose of it is. I don't know why the wording is so dramatic, but that's the way it sounded to me.
The, the traditional reason you see some, uh, ordinances listed in emergency is that, even though your ordinances don't require a finding of an emergency to introduce and pass an ordinance in the same night, all it requires is that there are at least five of you and not, not four of you, and you can do it the same night. There are some municipalities that say, in order to introduce and pass an ordinance in the same night, you have to find an emergency. And so, if you're American Legal Publishing, you're just going to include that in every, every template of this type of order.
Okay.
That's, that's why it's there.
Thank you. And I don't know if you take it.
So, this is, so, this is basically so you can do your job and everything codified?
That's right. You're, you're blessing the organizational work that American Legal Publishing does when they take all of your ordinances and then create a code and, and put them in the right place in the code. That's good.
Brian, can you give them our blessing?
Uh, introduction of ordinance number seventeen dash twenty-four, we'll go in first reading by title only. Uh, ordinance seventeen dash twenty-four, an ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to this code of ordinances for the city of Rochester declaring an emergency. All right, if there are no objections, uh, we'll have the second reading by title only. Okay, the ordinance number seventeen dash twenty-four, an ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to the code of ordinances for the city of Rochester declaring an emergency. Okay, and we'll read the third reading by title only. Um, so, then seventeen dash twenty-four, an ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to the code of ordinances for the city of Rochester declaring an emergency.
Okay. Need a motion to approve that ordinance?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Amy and Brian, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and there's ordinance twenty.
Could I ask, why did we skip ordinance number seventeen? It's already...
Yeah, we did, they were resolutions.
Give us a summary of this.
Of twenty?
Yeah.
Uh, the purpose of twenty, uh, I think was to, uh, allow the park board to approve commercial activity if it's within a city park. And right now, your ordinance says, "Commercial activity on any city property has to be approved by the Board of Public Works," and this says, "Well, for city park property, park board can..."
Okay. Okay.
So, Brian, you have to read it. Um, introduction of ordinance number twenty dash twenty-four, we'll begin with the first reading by title only. Ordinance number twenty dash twenty-four, an ordinance regarding commercial use of city property. If there are no objections, the second reading will also be by title only. All right, ordinance twenty dash twenty-four, an ordinance regarding commercial use of city property. All right, I'll just, um, I'll need you to enter for the third reading. Uh, read this ordinance by, ordinance twenty dash twenty-four by title only. Ordinance number twenty dash twenty-four, an ordinance regarding commercial use of city property.
Okay, I need a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-four. I'll move.
Second.
Remove the seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Ordinance twenty-one, vacating public road, Brian Lewis, north and south. I guess the question again is, um, do we want to abbreviate this vacation down to Mr. Hulahan's, and I've pronounced that correct? Is his last name Hulahan's pronounced correctly? Okay. Do we, do we want them to rewrite this and just vacate it down to his property, or do we want to take it as written? Uh, and I'm a little bit confused on what is north and south and what is east and west, but it looks a lot...
I'd like it to vacate.
Just to their property, yeah.
And I'd like it presented.
Is there, she left, I think, Brian, is there a way we can do this, um, just down to Mr. Hulahan's property on both sides and come back with one, uh, vacating request for everything that comes up here to drive and then down both sides, down to his property on each side?
I'll, I'll ask. I, I don't know why you couldn't, but it's two separate roads, so...
Oh, it is? Oh, well, that answers that.
So, it'll probably have to be two.
Okay. So, we'll need to layer, you know, okay. Um, is there, is everybody good with that plan? To do it that way?
Yes.
I mean, unless we're over, unless Bob gets outnumbered on that request, I mean...
I agree with Bob.
Okay, I, I think the council generally would like that rewritten, and we'll just stop it at his property, and, sir, if you have a need for that down the road, you know, if you build a house and need that extra room, you know, we can just have to come back to us and see about it at that time, but, um, everybody's...
I mean, everybody does, I mean, he does understand that if you vacate both those roads to park road, he does gain thirty feet to his property.
Yeah, you get, you get thirty feet, now you have to pay taxes on it.
But it's just, just so everybody's clear of that.
Yeah, just so everybody's got a clear understanding. And are you guys are okay with that, and they come back to us with a, a different map? Okay. All right. We don't have anything to vote on that tonight.
Mr. Mayor, if someone wants to move to table that until next month, that way...
We need a motion to table it?
Yeah, that way you, you confirm it on the agenda, you don't have to have new hearings.
Oh, got you. Okay. Brian, or, uh, Bob made the motion to table it? Bob, can you? Art seconded it. All in favor of table until next week? In the meantime, we can get a re... All in favor of table until next week, and meantime, we can get a redrawn map to us, all right?
Just twenty-one.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right.
The same thing with twenty-two.
And we're doing the same thing, I assume, on twenty-two, since it's all part of one basic group? So, uh, go ahead and make a motion on ordinance twenty-two. Table that, please. Brian, Prince Water made the motion, who?
Second.
Art seconded it. All in favor of tabling ordinance twenty twenty, oh, twenty-two, I'm sorry. Let's say aye, okay?
Aye.
All right. Okay, then we need a, um, read on the ordinance for twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four, which is the vacation of J Street.
Okay, introduction of ordinance number twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four, we'll begin with the first reading by title only. Uh, ordinance number twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four, ordinance vacating J Street, extending north to south adjacent to the western boundary of the petitioner's parcel. Unless there's any objections, we'll have the second reading by title only. Ordinance number twenty-three twenty, dash twenty-four, sorry. Ordinance number twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four, ordinance vacating J Street, extending north to south adjacent to the western boundary of the petitioner's parcel. Yeah, we'll put this ordinance on the agenda for the third reading at the, at this time, um, by title only. Ordinance number twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four, ordinance vacating J Street, extending north to south adjacent to the western boundary of the petitioner's parcel.
Okay, we need a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four.
I'll make a motion.
Any move?
Second.
We're seconded. All in favor, raise your rating. I can't vote on that. You passed six of them. Okay, well, I'm done, so I'm back, yeah. Okay. I believe we're done, except for our department head reports. Chasing the shots.
Uh, good evening, uh, these, the monthly stats are not going to be accurate as far as the incident toll, because we're operating on Spelman and Cody both, uh, as county cameramen in that good patch. And weekends force, and we've been chasing our tail trying to enter the incidents in Spelman and in Cody, and we've kind of given up on that. So for the month of July, in Cody, we had four hundred eighty-nine incidents. Um, I looked in Spelman, there were three hundred sixty-seven incidents in Spelman, uh, for the month of July, but some of those were doubled in Cody, so once we get there on the same database, once we're in Spelman, um, moving forward, it'll be cleaner, but it's going to take us a couple months before we get truly accurate numbers. Uh, eighteen accidents, those are accurate, seventy-seven warnings, sixty-five offenses, forty-nine case reports, twenty-one lockouts, five towed vehicles, thirty people incarcerated, and then you have the crimes that those people were locked for. Um, other than that, uh, we've got the parade this weekend, so we'll be busy Saturday morning while the streets blocked off at eight-thirty, so if you're going to the parade, get there before then. Uh, that's about it right now, unless you have any questions. Uh, Jonathan Licker, um, has started the academy this week, uh, this is his first week, so he'll be out for sixteen weeks. That's about it, unless you have questions.
Thanks, Chief. Chief, the boys.
Uh, month of July, I went fifty-seven runs, five structure fires, one brush fire, two unintended fires, three vehicle fires, seven alarms, uh, six gas leaks, one river rescue, five accidents, uh, three events or inspections, they were all events, I think, and we were in, uh, twenty-four medical runs. Or not, everything's been pretty much the same, no major purchases or breakdowns.
Street Department, Dwayne.
Good evening, since your last meeting, we did take possession of two new Ford F-550s from Rochester Ford. Um, they're over at, uh, Terry Truck in Winemac right now getting dump beds and snowplows put on them. Uh, we ordered those back in December of last year. Um, we're, uh, currently clearing the properties east of McDonald Drive that the city, uh, took over responsibility for in preparation for the extension of McDonald Drive from, um, State Road twenty-five over to Southway thirty-one, so we can open that up. We're prepping for the nickel plate, um, event this weekend, um, and we'll be working with the police departments for getting barrels and barricades out. On the park side, uh, the pool season has closed, um, we're already in the process of, uh, winterizing the pool for, uh, the season. The splash pad, it will be open until, uh, after Labor Day, and then the following Tuesday, then we will, um, shut it down and start prepping it for the winter. And, um, just to plug, um, and I'm sure you've seen it on the front page of the paper, but we're, um, pushing for our new, uh, five-year plan to really like the community's involvement as far as inputs on, uh, the things that we can do to improve our parks and to, uh, get that, um, long-range plan put together. That's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Dwayne, is there a specific, um, link that needs to be shared or something?
At the nickel plate, um, there's going to be a lot of advertisement, the park board is going to have a, a, um, their own, um, uh, setup, booth setup, and there'll be, um, I know they're, they're having calling cards with a QR code that you can scan and then do the, the, um, survey on there, so, yeah. They'll be out in force this weekend.
Did you want to briefly talk about the cycle coming?
I didn't think we were going to talk about that today.
It's forthcoming.
Okay, it's forthcoming, cycle.
Yep. Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um... Where are you going for the town partnership?
I'm going to have a report, we are, um, pretty excited about what this weekend's going to be. I think we're going to have a lot of fun with the parade and downtown festival, we've got a full lineup all day, so it should be a nice event for everybody, it looks like the weather's going to cooperate.
The parade starts at nine?
Parade starts at nine, the music starts at eleven.
They had over fifty entrants for the parade.
Sixty-seven, as of this morning.
Sixty-seven, and that, you know, like that car club is one entry, you know, so that could be, it'll be, this could be a nice parade.
Like the tractor, like one person signed up for tractors, that could also, so...
How many, did you say, sixty-seven?
Sixty-seven, as of this morning's board meeting.
That's incredible.
That's how many floats? That's how many floats are entries?
Or just entries?
Entries.
Could be an hour long.
Good deal. You what? I said, are you going to tell us, no?
Exactly.
I squashed you.
He went door to door over the wall.
Couple months ago, he came in with all his enthusiasm, I looked at my guy, does he got any, uh, any guts, or guts enough to curb his enthusiasm? No.
He worked it hard, you know, they've gone to a lot of other parades, passed out flyers, enrolled a lot of people.
This has been on his heart, ever since I met him three or four years ago, it was the first time I met him, he brought up a parade, he wanted to see a parade, so it's been, it's great that it's going to be what it is, and it's exciting, exciting days.
We just hope he doesn't forget next year.
You what?
We just hope he doesn't forget next year.
Exactly.
Okay. Amy, you got any area planning permission?
Uh, continuing the conversation about solar, so if you have strong feelings about solar farms in Fulton County, then I would come to the next area plan meeting, um, as we will be, uh, discussing the, um, whole, um, ordinance in totality, so we've had lots of good discussion, I've been pretty impressed with Dwayne's research as well as others who have attended, we've had a lot of public comments, so, um, a lot of people are very opinionated about it, but it's actually pretty fascinating, so I'm interested in seeing kind of where everything lands. So I feel like we're putting up with a pretty, um, relevant and well-thought-out position, so. And then animal adoption center, uh, Janet is a rock star, and she, uh, single-handedly put together one of the largest rubbish sales I think I've ever seen. I, uh, volunteered twice to, um, receive donations, and I was super impressed with the generosity of citizens who stopped by to donate all of their goods to us so that the animal adoption center could raise money. So I have not asked her about how much money she's raised as of yet, but, um, there was enough there that they could have raised a large amount, so she does a good job. And she met, uh, with Trent and Jody, met with Trent, myself, and others just to talk about budget, to understand what their budget needs are and any potential changes, so trying to make sure we have expectations.
When is that area planning permission next?
What's it?
Hard item?
No, we're in that, uh, when is the next one?
Well, actually, I think there's going to be a special meeting because there are two items that we still needed to settle on, and then after we have that special meeting, then it'll be the regularly scheduled meeting, which will be, uh...
Well, you know, with just last night, so next month.
If you want to, yeah, if you want that one, that would be the one Sunday, yeah.
And that'll be the final, final item.
Yeah. I'll make sure that gets out, Mark, if you're interested, I'll let that know.
And there's the pad on that, then once that's done, then it will go to the commissioners, and then it's going to go to the different, it'll come here to the city council as well at some point in the future so that it can be, uh, enacted by December, or by January of next year.
Because it's a complete moratorium up in Atlanta, right?
The, well, right, moratoriums at the end of the year. Fedco, Michael?
We've been having a lot of scheduled and unscheduled meetings on the industrial park, uh, mostly within DOT right now, discussing different ways that, uh, we can get into some of the properties, some of it's landlocked, um, so we're talking about various options there. A couple days ago, we had a meeting with the housing authority, uh, it was a business owners-only meeting, special invites, uh, that the housing company wanted to talk with. We're moving forward on that, the role of this meeting was to discuss, um, Fedco's specific project as far as the housing industry concerned. We were asking business leaders what kind of homes would be attractive to employees and, uh, professional people for them, gathered a lot of information, we're still calling through it to figure out what's what. Um, so that's really kind of right now, everything that we can talk about at the moment.
That's on redevelopment commissions, park board, Bob?
The mail-in on August twelfth, and I think we got another meeting coming up here shortly, I think, tomorrow. Uh, but Dwayne did a great job, uh, summarizing that, dealing, I think they can, the park, Jessica Schaefer, they've got a website, and I think they got Facebook, and I think you can find that survey on there. I think I got that.
Uh, BCA Council for eighteen, Mark, can you?
Council on eighteen, actually, I met yesterday, but I was unable to attend to another meeting. BCA meets tomorrow night, they've got, uh, three petitions, uh, on their agenda. Two of them are having to do with fence very, uh, front garden, a variance with fences in the front yard, one due to a dog and the other one, privacy fence, so, um, pretty normal agenda for them tomorrow, the test tomorrow.
Bruce, can you answer the waste?
It's last night after our meeting, so, um, after. But, uh, they, yeah, no, well, they, uh, pretty much every month, they get almost the same amount of money. I think the interesting thing that I keep finding out as I'm learning more about them is how much stuff they actually take that they don't get paid for. You know, like your five-gallon plastic pickle buckets? If I need the concrete, gee, you know, it's like, you know, I go through eighteen of those a month, and, uh, they make no money off that type of plastic. And then there's all tons that they just give away just so that it doesn't go into our, into our dump, which is really nice. And that's just one example of stuff they take.
If you got a use for it, though.
Yeah, if you have a use for it, you're going to, yeah, you can also go and get it yourself, you know? Like, like those buckets, like, like your cat litter buckets or anything like that. None of that's recycling. But they still take it, so, so they count the hundreds of pounds that they actually give away or pay to get away. Yeah, it's, it's interesting.
Okay, tree board, never met them, I think went on there yet.
No meeting to record.
Water board, John's not here. County, what do you guys want to share anything from the county?
I can always talk, I guess. Uh, we did appoint, we had a nine-one-one director and a EMA director position open, we did fill them. Uh, Brittany Thompson is our nine-one-one director, and Dom Tool is our EMA director. So having a director, hopefully we can get you taken care of, make it easier on you, so. She ain't officially supposed to start till September ninth, but I'm sure if you want to talk to her, you know, that's more, you know.
Not to bother her, Billy.
Okay, okay, so that's it for me, unless you guys got any questions, I'll make it short and sweet. Good, okay, thank you.
I have shared this with Amy already, and, uh, we will be on the radio, I believe, Friday. Um, the Beaven home, I briefly had mentioned this a while back, uh, I sit on the Beaven home board as the Fulton County representative, and, um, due to some domestic violence situations, um, the Beaven home board has approved an individual to start being housed here, um, once every other week. So it's not a perfect solution yet, we're working on more long-term solutions with the county, Rick has been helping me with that as well as Dave Summers, but, um, they were here on the twenty-first, the young ladies that will be sharing the responsibility, one of them lives in Argus, and so they will be here. I believe it's going to be Wednesdays, but I will get that final report tomorrow, so Andy, um, has been notified, and then the prosecutor office as well, so they will be here if there are any issues related to, um, somebody who is having a current situation that needs help there, um, they will be here for them to meet with, to discuss. If it's an emergency situation, they will, uh, work with law enforcement to get them placed, um, unfortunately, all the way in Warsaw until we can figure something else out, but they will transport, they will figure out transportation. Um, so they have offered that to us as an immediate solution while we're working on long-term solutions. So I just wanted to say that out loud to everybody that that person will not be here, of course, this Wednesday, but then next Wednesday, but we will be discussing on the radio, the interim director and I, and she will be sharing what exactly the plan is so that anybody here can be aware of that and that resource will be available to us. It does not cost us anything, um, at the moment, so.
All right, Andy, legal department, do you have anything you want to add or share?
I do not have anything else, though.
ADA concerns, Beth, anything there? Motion to adjourn. All right, Brian, um, you got, you got my leave, I'm sorry. Motion, uh, motion's been made, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.